Karen and I agree that it's time to start the meeting. So we will all stand to recite the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome. We have all board members present except for Jared Gertson and Jamie Lewis Gonzalez. We need an adoption of the agenda, including this supplemental personnel report.
Make a motion?
All right, we have a motion by Tracy and a second by Tammy to adopt the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Madam President, if I may point out, I wanted to let you know on the extra addition that was placed in here, Mr. Scheck indicated to me the reason there are so many sub-teachers on the separation list is because those are individuals that for more than a year have not substituted as their position. And so there was contact made with as many as possible to see if they were no longer interested in doing that, and that's why you see so many on this list. And so there are previous ones, but I thought it was interesting that they hadn't subbed for a solid year, so in case you were curious, I wanted you to know.
Thanks for that. Approval of bills, Ryan, were you able to look things over?
Yeah, I looked over. If I didn't have any questions, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Ryan and a second by Jeff to approve the bills. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. And now we get to have a little fun.
Okay, I'm very excited about this. I talked about it quite a bit, but tonight I get to show everyone. And so we are an open meeting, and it does provide the opportunity for all of us to be included because it's only a few steps away. I want to walk over to the Civic Center and show you one of our newest accomplishments on the project that kind of fulfills the district identification of the Civic Center. So everyone that wants to can walk with me. If you're not interested in that, you can hang around here, but we'll be back in a few minutes.
And we lost one.
So surprising.
Only one?
So anyway, that was fun. I appreciate doing that. Thought that would go well.
Yeah. Very nice. I'm glad we were able to look at that. Okay, thank you for that, Dr. Dirksen. We, I assume Jeff will find his way back here in just a minute. We'll go ahead and get started on the Stuco reports. We have Vivian Nguyen from Dodge City High School, I hope, maybe. No? Okay, so we do not have Vivian from the high school. How about Christian Chavez from Comanche Middle School? Yay.
Is the green light on?
Right, Justice. Evening, Board. I'm Christian, CMS Stuco President. I'm here to give my report for CMS and Stuco. I'll start off with what's going on at CMS. What we're doing at CMS is we're currently reviewing for the end of the first quarter, reviewing for our final end quarter tests for Math in the LA. Learning was sparked up the revolution, or American Revolution for Social Studies and parts of the cell for Science. And moving on to Stuco matters, currently, we just finished last Friday our Pi Principal fundraiser. We profited quite a decent amount from that, also raised some school spirit. Do not, people loved it. We also currently holding our spirit week for the final DCMS and CMS games week, Thursday. And then at the end of the month, we're doing Red Ribbon Week and finishing it off with our first dance of the year, which is themed around Halloween. And lastly, I'll give some updates about what's going on at CMS. We just introduced Minga, so it's, we introduced Minga to help students get to class on time, and so they're actually like in class for most of the time. And so hopefully that'll help kids learn and get caught up on the work and not get fall behind. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good job, Christian. Thank you. All right, how about Emily Klinky? Did I get it right? Nope. Yeah?
Good evening, Board. My name is Emily Klinky, and I'm your Student Council President for Dodge City Middle School. I attended Northwest Elementary School, and I'm currently heavily involved in the Performing Arts with Choir and Orchestra. I played volleyball, planning to do basketball. Scholars will entrap throughout the year as well as drill team. First up is our upcoming pep assembly. We will be supporting our football, volleyball, cross-country teams at the pep assembly on the 12th, which is Thursday. We also have the Aloha Bowl on the 12th at the Memorial Stadium, and it would be wonderful if everyone would come out and support our teams in this friendly rivalry game. Next up is our Red Ribbon Week, which is October 23rd to October 27th. While we don't have the spirit days for it completely finalized, it will be going on in the week of our Red Ribbon Carnival, which brings me to the last topic. Finally, we have our second annual Red Ribbon Carnival. We would like to encourage everyone to come out to this event and bring all their friends and family. We will hold raffles, there will be games, and of course, our DJ Officer Harris. It is located at the back parking lot next to the cafeteria, and parking will be in the athletic parking lot. And you guys should definitely come out and get pied because that's a once-in-a-lifetime experience, and everybody wants to get pied, right? Again, we encourage everyone to come out and enjoy this fun event with all your friends and family.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Nice job, both of you. All right, we're ready now for the elementary report. We've got Sewell this month.
Good evening, Board members and Dr. Dirksen. Elementary buildings have been busy with various events, including make teacher night, organizing family dances, bringing awareness to bully prevention with fun dress-up days, planning Red Ribbon Week later this month, preparing for favorite book character parades, and beginning to look at Thanksgiving meal celebrations, developing student ambassadors and student council groups. Many buildings have completed their reading or math game nights with great turnouts. Also, we have planned or already have had many students visit the pumpkin patches. The mascots are making their appearances to encourage all the kiddos. And Bright Beginnings implemented conscious discipline strategies to help us stay calm and make friends, and they're working on October parent meeting to take place in collaboration with the Victory Electric Pumpkin event. Fast Bridge reading groups have started, and the majority of progress monitor has been positive growth, so that's been great to see. We've had Picture Day, dental screenings, vision and hearing screenings, and we've also have had Raptor Alert that has been utilized by all staff in buildings throughout drills with the police showing up at only a few buildings accidentally as we break out the kings of the app. And so that's just a small snippet into a few things going on in the elementary world. So be happy to answer any questions.
Did you say family dances?
Yes, so there's daddy-daughter dances, and then there's also mom-son game nights, and then some elementaries are just going to do family dancing.
Cool.
So, yeah, thank you.
Thanks for the report.
Thank you.
We're ready now for recognition of visitors. Persons may present ideas or concerns regarding USD 443 schools. No action will be taken by the Board at this meeting. Personalities and behavior of employees are not to be presented during this period, but are to be reported to the employee's immediate supervisor. The President shall determine the amount of time to be spent for citizen participation. Tonight, we have the Ford County Historical Society wanting to do a presentation on the Landmark Arts Project, and we've got Kent Stalik and Amanda Stegman that will report for us. So if you'd like to approach the podium.
You're all going to get some propaganda. After you get it all, we'll start. Basically, we're here tonight. The first thing to do is to thank you for your participation last year in the first-ever Landmark Art Program, which was held at the former Lorlock Hotel Lobby, which is now the Ford County Government Center. And it was quite successful. We had schools participating. The high school was there, Comanche Middle School, Sacred Heart School, and our person over here handed, no, you, yes, you did hand them out. I don't know if you all know Mary Hendricks, but she's with the Sacred Arts School, and she's the chairman of the committee, the Landmark Art Committee with the Historical Society. And tonight, after thanking you for last year, we'd like to talk about this year, or next year, 2024, and that's going to be at the Old City Hall, which is now the distillery. And on your second page of your handout, you'll see the history of that location, which is quite historical. It was all the way back to the original Boot Hill. And then education got involved in it. You had two different third ward schools built there through the years. And after that, the city hall that is there now was built and dedicated in 1929. That was a big deal. They had a big parade, and the cowboy band led it, and it was, it's still there, the building. And then it was the Chamber of Commerce, and then it was the Fire Department, then it was vacant. And we had a scare then because it was vacant for quite a while, and it looked like it was going to be torn down. And the city got together with Hayes and his family and did a really great thing because the money they would have spent to tear it down was given to save it. And they've done a good job. I think everybody that's been through the building sees what it is today, and it is one of the prized locations of our community with the history behind it. We want to make this our second annual landmark project, and the people at the distillery have been very cooperative, Lee and the other folks. And basically, we're going to do it just like we did last year. We're going to have a ceremony. We're going to have time for people to display the artwork from the various schools, and we also have the video, students from the high school, and they've already met with this facility and gone through it with Lee and so forth. And basically, it's going to be at the end of May, or end of, I got it mixed up, end of April and the beginning of May. And it's going to last for about a week, and all the artwork's going to be displayed, and we're going to hand out, if you look at the next page, which is the budget page, we last year gave out money to each school for their art materials for their art classes. We're going to do that again this year. Also, we're going to have scholarships, four of them, for people to pursue their art interests at the DC3. And we want to not only give appreciation of the history of this community and its landmarks, we also want to promote the arts, and people who have interest and want to go on with the arts, we want to help them do that. I want to have Andrea get up and talk about her fabulous experience in the arts.
Hello, my name is Andrea Stegman, and I am happy to be a part of this group and speak with you today. I want you to reflect for a minute and think about what brought you to be sitting in your seat today. Was there an event or person who helped guide you to give back to your community in the ways that you do? When I think about the reason why I'm standing here, I think back to when I was 16 years old and having my artwork hang at the Carnegie Gallery here in Dodge City. I was very proud to have my piece of artwork displayed in such a beautiful and public setting. That same piece of artwork went on to receive awards and was on display in Washington, DC. My very first opportunity and time on an airplane was when I traveled to Washington, DC with my mom and high school art teacher to accept my award. It is amazing the impact this opportunity had on my life. Twelve years later, when my high school art teacher asked me to get involved with the Arts in Dodge City, I was honored to be asked. I was thrilled to be working side by side with a mentor from my teenage years. Since getting involved years ago, I have met some of the most talented, intelligent, and capable people. Ford County really is a great place to be. I hope you support the initiative to educate our Ford County students on historic landmarks and history while bringing out their creative sites. And thank you for the time that you dedicate to the students of Dodge City and for listening to us today.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We also have Mary Hendricks, who handled most of the things last year and talked to all the teachers of the schools, and I'd like her to say a few words.
Thank you for letting us come, Board. This is a real privilege. I would like to thank you so much for letting us have this project last year. It was wonderful to see all the artwork that kids did in all of your schools. Your teachers were amazing to work with. They were very enthusiastic, and wow, the artwork is great. So I would like to do that again this year, meet with each one of the teachers and their principals sometimes, and present what we would like to do and get them enthused about the project, and go from there and have everybody's artwork on display. It was wonderful last year. I think most of you came, so you know how good it was to see and for the public to see all that wonderful artwork.
Ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
Also, we have with us Patty McGee, and she's one of the artists on our board. I don't know, Patty, want to say anything? There you go. Well, that's about what we had to present tonight, and any questions? Again, I-
It's a wonderful thing. I just think it's a wonderful thing. Thank you.
You got a cold?
I think my voice is changing finally.
It's about time.
Yeah, I don't know.
Anyway, again, our purpose here tonight is to get the Board to say, yeah, we want to do this this year, and let us go ahead with the project. So I don't know if you do that now or later, but anyway, our presentation is over.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kent.
I think that goes without saying. We supported it last year after hearing the presentation, and it was definitely a success. It's a great opportunity to collaborate as a community and as a school district, and it benefits us all. So I have no doubt that we will continue it this year and move forward. So I would encourage you to continue with your plans as such, and the teachers will fit it into their art curriculum when it's apropos. And I thank all of you for understanding and being willing to work with our staff, and I think it went well last year, so I see no reason it won't this year, and we're going to encourage all departments to be involved, so. Yes, thank you.
All right, we are ready then for the consent agenda, which includes the approval of personnel, including the supplemental personnel report, approval of minutes for the September 25th, 2023 Board of Education meeting, approval of KSDE Teacher Mentoring Grant Application, approval of Child Care Aware Grant Application, approval of 2023-24 Site Council Membership List for Dodge City High School, ratified KSDE Mental Health Intervention Team Grant, Grant Memorandum of Understanding with Compass Behavioral Health, and the approval of school district credit cards, two of them to get, to have a limit increase.
Okay, I make a motion for approval?
Second.
All right, we've got a motion by Tammy and a second by Tracy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. All right, we're ready now for new business. First up is the instructional coaching update with Kelly and Melissa. You all are welcome to stay for the whole meeting, but if you want to make a getaway, you can do that as well.
Good evening. We're just going to take a few minutes of your time to familiarize yourself with the instructional coaching program as well as our educator support program. I think there might be something backwards there. I don't think we're on the first, it should be instructional coaching first. Are we on the first slide? We like to take a few minutes at the end of each, at the beginning of each year, and then a couple times later on in the year to just keep you apprised of what's happening with our instructional coaching program as well as now what we call our educator support program. If this is too long, you can blame Dr. Springsteen because he helped put it together and then took off for London, so he's not here to take any of the credit or blame. So I'm Kelly Clark, the Professional Development Coordinator, and this is Melissa Tisaka, our new academic intervention coordinator. And so just to kind of bring you up to speed on our coaching program, what we're about to show you is just a brief overview of what was shared with our educator support program participants during Orientation Week to help them understand our approach to instructional coaching, why we do what we do, how we do what we do. And then also, our district administrators, Amy Loder, Matt Turner, and of course, Dr. Springsteen, are doing some things with the building leadership around instructional leadership and the relationship between the coaches and building principals. So all that's kind of together in one thing. But one of the things we do focus on is the relationship, coaching in sports and how that works, and we try to emphasize that. You don't get a coach in sports unless you make the team, so it's not the bad people or the ones that aren't performing that get coaching. It's everybody coaches to get better. We can always get better at what we do. In the corporate world, they, the underperformers don't get coached. They only invest coaching in their top performers. So that's, that's one of the things we try to emphasize with all of our teachers, staff, and of course, the coaches too. If you don't, if football's not your thing, I don't know, this is not working very well. Yeah, there we go. Do you want to do it? There's just a couple other things that are in there too, but I just need it to keep going. There we go. That's the relationship we want our coaches and our, and the teachers to have, but you can keep, you can keep going. So Atul Gawande is somebody that we do, we look a lot into. Jim Knight is one of the premier experts in the instructional coaching field. He references a lot of Dr. Gawande's work, and so this is just a brief, it's not a full TED Talk, it's just a brief piece of a TED Talk from Dr. Gawande, and he's talking about, it's titled, "Want to Get Great at Something, Get a Coach."
The thing is, is they are all experienced professionals. I didn't meet anybody who hadn't been part of thousands of deliveries, but against the complexities that they face, they seem to be at their limits. They were not getting better anymore. It's how good you're going to be that really matters. It presses on a fundamental question. How do professionals get better at what they do? How do they get great? And there are two views about this. One is the traditional pedagogical view, that is that you go to school, you study, you practice, you learn, you graduate, and then you go out into the world and you make your way on your own. A professional is someone who is capable of managing their own improvement. That is the approach that virtually all professionals have learned by. That's how doctors learn. That's how lawyers do, scientists, musicians. And the thing is, it works. Consider, for example, the legendary Juilliard violin instructor Dorothy Delay. She trained an amazing roster of violin virtuosos, Midori, Sarah Chang, Itzak Perlman. Each of them came to her as young talents, and they worked with her over years. What she worked on most, she said, was inculcating in them habits of thinking and of learning so that they could make their way in the world without her when they were done. Now, the contrasting view comes out of sports, and they say, you are never done. Everybody needs a coach. Everyone. Everyone, the greatest in the world, needs a coach. So I tried to think about this as a surgeon. Pay someone to come into my operating room, observe me, and critique me. It seems absurd. Expertise means not needing to be coached. So then which view is right? I learned that coaching came into sports as a very American idea. In 1875, Harvard and Yale played one of the very first American Rules football games. Yale hired a head coach. Harvard did not. The results? Over the next three decades, Harvard won just four times. Harvard hired a coach. And it became the way that sports works. But isn't necessary then? Does it transfer into other fields? I decided to ask of all people, Itzak Perlman. He had trained the Dorothy Delay way and became arguably the greatest violinist of his generation. One of the beautiful things about getting a write for The New Yorker is I call people up and they return my phone calls. And Perlman returned my phone call. So we ended up having an almost two-hour conversation about how he got to where he got in his career. And I asked him, I said, why don't violinists have coaches? And he said, I don't know, but I always had a coach. You always had a coach? Oh, yeah. My wife Toby, they had graduated together from Juilliard, and she had given up her job as a concert violinist to be his coach, sitting in the audience, observing him, and giving him feedback. Itzak, in that middle section, you know, you sounded a little bit mechanical. What can you do differently next time? It was crucial to everything he became, he said. Turns out, there are numerous problems in making it on your own. You don't recognize the issues that are standing in your way, or if you do, you don't necessarily know how to fix them. And the result is that somewhere along the way, you stop improving. And I thought about that, and I realized that was exactly what had happened to me as a surgeon. I'd entered practice in 2003, and for the first several years, it was just this steady upward improvement in my learning curve. I watched my complication rates drop from one year to the next, and after about five years, they leveled out. And a few more years after that, I realized I wasn't getting any better anymore, and I thought, is this as good as I'm going to get? So I thought a little more, and I said, okay, I'll try a coach. So I asked a former professor of mine who had retired, his name is Bob Osteen, and he agreed to come to my operating room and observe me. The case, I remember that first case, it went beautifully. I didn't think there would be anything much he'd have to say when we were done. Instead, he had all page of dense with notes. Just small things, he said, but it's the small things that matter. Did you notice that the light had swung out of the wound during the case? You spent about half an hour just operating off the light from reflected surfaces. Another thing I noticed, he said, your elbow goes up in the air every once in a while. That means you're not in full control. A surgeon's elbows should be down at their sides resting comfortably. So that means if you feel your elbow going in the air, you should get a different instrument or just move your feet. It was a whole nother level of awareness. And I had to think, you know, there was something fundamentally profound about this. He was describing what great coaches do, and what they do is they are your external eyes and ears, providing a more accurate picture of your reality. They're recognizing the fundamentals, they're breaking your actions down, and then helping you build them back up again. After two months of coaching, I felt myself getting better again, and after a year, I saw my complications drop down even further. It was painful. I didn't like being observed, and at times I didn't want to have to work on things. I also felt there are periods where I would get worse before I got better, but it made me realize that the coaches were on to something profoundly important.
Thank you for taking the time to watch that. What he talks about is fundamental to why we provide instructional coaching in Dodge City. If we can go to the next slide, you can tell Dr. Gawande is a surgeon. He was actually invited by the World Health Organization to participate in a project to reduce surgical deaths across the world. You can see all the different countries that they were in. They went from Seattle, Washington, to Toronto, Canada, to India, to Tanzania, and you can keep going. And what they found, when they brought in coaching, and they specifically used checklists to break down the practice, the practices, when they used coaching in conjunction with these checklists, these are the statistics that they saw. They saw a drop in complication rates, death rates, and all of the hospitals where they did this saw decreases. And so Jim Knight, who is the expert that we turn to, he brought a lot of what was learned through this process into instructional coaching, and that's how we structure what we do every day. The one thing that you'll notice, he says that the coaches break practices down and the coaches do that. When our coaches partner with teachers, they do it together. The coach doesn't come in and tell the teacher, this is how you, what you should do and how you should do it. They work together in partnership to identify what the goals are that the teachers want to meet with their students, the strategies that the teachers think would be most effective, and then how to break those strategies down to get the best result from them. So we focus on the partnership principles, things that I'm sure you've all heard of in either for me or in other places, but things like equality and choice and voice, the importance of reflection. We can keep going. Dialogue and this idea that we learn from each other, reciprocity. The coach doesn't come in as the sage, so we're learning from each other as we dig into this. But one of the most fundamental, important things about it is this idea of praxis, that we take the learning from theory and put it into practice in the classroom with students. It's job embedded, it's not theoretical, it's what we do. And so that's how the coaches are able to extend professional learning in a way that we just can't do if all we're doing is sessions. It is important to note that there are some differences between mentoring and coaching. Coaches kind of slide along a continuum, just depending on what the teachers need. What is the experience level? What's happening with the teacher? What does the teacher want? So they might slide into kind of a mentoring advising role, but most of the time, they really should be over on the asking side of things, helping the teachers dig in and do the reflecting for themselves, because teachers are part of a thinking profession, and when you try to do the thinking for somebody who isn't a thinking profession, they don't like that very much. So that's not how we should really approach it. We also, this year, Dr. Springsteen, Amy Loder, Matt Turner, they've actually been bringing some of this into work that they're doing with building leadership. How do the building principals really focus on their role in instructional leadership? What do they have in common with the coaches in terms of that? Things like dialogue and choice, that they should be using data, that kind of thing is in common. But the building leaders do things that the coaches do not do. The coaches do not evaluate. That is strictly the building principle. The principal is more likely to set student and teacher-centered goals, whereas the coach, really with the teacher, they're identifying student-centered goals. What do we want to see from students? So there are some important differences there, but there is some overlap. So basically, coaching in Dodge City is a partnership. We share a common goal, we want to look at teaching and learning with the goal ultimately being students, student progress, student achievement. There is some research behind coaching. There's been a number of studies over decades that talk about when you bring in a new practice, if without coaching support, if a teacher's just, okay, here, let's teach you something in a session, now go forth and do, you get about a 10% implementation rate. However, when you have a partnership with a coach to come in and come alongside and help support in that implementation, you get up to 90% or better implementation of strategies in the classroom. And we can. So basically, Corwin, along with the National Staff Development Council, they did a study a number of years ago. Over 6,000 teachers were surveyed, and they asked teachers, what do you want for your professional learning? And they came up with three fundamental recommendations. The first, you can keep going. The first of which is that they wanted it to be job embedded, they wanted it to happen in the classroom. Also, they wanted to use a variety of data to plan and assess the professional learning, and then teachers wanted to be involved in decision-making about their professional learning. All of those things happen with instructional coaching. It's job embedded, the teacher decides what data is most relevant, and that's what they use, and of course, the teachers are, they're the wheel, they decide all of it. It's important for you to know, John Hattie, you may have heard of him, he's pretty big in educational research. He talks about, he does meta-studies. He looks at all of these different studies, thousands of them, and in looking at those studies, they determine what strategies have the greatest impact on student achievement. And it's important to note that that 0.4 in the middle, that's what they call, that's kind of a hinge point. If a strategy has a 0.4 effect size, that's basically a year's worth of learning. That's the average amount of growth you would expect to see in a year. Anything over that 0.4 effect size, that is greater than a year's growth, is what is typically achieved by doing that. Notice the one way at the far right, it's the one with the largest effect size, 1.6, four times the average yearly growth, is collective teacher efficacy. That means teachers are coming together, they're trusting one another, they're building their, they're building their idea of how well we can work together, what can we achieve together. And in working with coaches, that's really what we're trying to build. Coaching is just, it's part of a cycle, that it's part of how we do our professional learning. There's training, there's implementation, that's where coaching comes in. We look at how the training is working and reflect on it, and it all goes back around again. So, you can go back, there we go. So this is just the basics of how the coaches typically structure the work. It's called the impact cycle. They work with teachers to identify current reality. We encourage use of video, but it's not forced. They look at student data, they set a student-focused goal, then they pick a strategy and they really learn about that strategy. They dig in, how does this strategy work? Lot of times, modeling is involved. And then they move into the improve phase, where they really look at how did this strategy work for students after we implemented it? What needs to change? What needs to happen with our goal? And so on, and then it just continues around in a cycle. So just to briefly remind you, last June, we came to you and, at the end of last year, and this is the data that we shared with you, we were at Central when we shared this. This is teacher perception data at the end of the year last year. So we asked teachers at the end of a coaching cycle to rate how the experience impacted them. Notice, 100% rated them a five or six out of six, that when the coach modeled that research-based instructional practice, it helped them to implement it in the classroom. All of them said that. 97% rated a five or six out of six, that the coach provides a safe opportunity to reflect on what they're currently doing in the classroom. And 95% rated five or six out of six, that partnering with the coach helped them to grow as a professional. And that perceptual data is important, but it's also important to get that empirical evidence. Last year, 159 literacy and math goals were set. That's just literacy and math, that does not include classroom management or any of the other kinds of goals that were set. 159 math and literacy goals were set. Of those, 84% were met, which means that students were achieving in the way that teachers wanted to see them achieve. We had 69 new teachers enrolled in our program last year. This year, we're going to take that a step further, and we actually have, I won't click on that link, but you're welcome to. Visible Learning, which is John Hattie's organization, they have a progress and achievement tool, where we can put in pre-assessment data that's identified by the teacher and post, and look and see for that student, what was the effect size of that strategy on that student? Then we can average that to see what effect did that strategy have overall on the class, so that we'll be able to get an idea of, to the student level and classroom level, what is the impact instructional coaches are having in the classroom? So that's something we're excited to bring to you a little bit later this year, once the cycles get going and we're looking at the goals and the data that's coming out of that work. So that's just our instructional coaching overview. This would take us into number two on the curriculum side. Are there any questions or comments that you would have over the instructional coaching?
Could we go back one slide? Can you explain on the, maybe?
I was thinking about it. That's forward. We need to go back.
Yeah.
That one?
In that green, the teacher effects. So is that saying that reducing class size and homework is not good for, I'm reading that wrong?
No, you're not reading it wrong. When you look at, and he's done, it's over 2,000, he's taken over 2,000 meta-studies, so not individual studies, but groups of studies on the same thing. And what they're finding is that that's not typically going to have the biggest bang for your buck in terms of what's going to impact student achievement. You can see on, in those, that turquoise group, those are, those are your biggest bang for your buck. The two most, and it's, this continues to be the case, as they, because they revised this. I think his original one might have been done in 2008, and then he revised it again in, I think, 2016, and now just again. But continually, and the top ones kind of might switch with each other, but at the top, you see, it's mainly teachers are the most important factor in student achievement, far and away.
Right.
Things like collective teacher efficacy and the teacher estimation of student achievement. Do teachers believe that students can achieve and learn are the top two things that consistently come out of this work. So yeah, and I'm happy to share with you, he has an entire list, and he goes from negative effect sizes, things that actually are detrimental, to things that actually get us greater than what we would typically see a year's growth being.
But to be clear, reducing class size is not a negative effect.
No.
It is, it is not as effective as some of these others that have time and truly tested shown, because Hattie's talked about this many times, because that confuses a lot of people. But what he's saying is, no matter, if you don't have good instruction, if you're not effective in teaching your kids, it doesn't matter how few a kid you have in your class, you're still not good at instruction. And that's what it's basically saying. But there's very few teachers in this world that would say, I'd rather have 36 than 20. You know, so class size still has an impact at some point, but it's not on the wheel making the impact that some of these others are, so, good question.
How, we have, like most school districts, we have an inordinate amount of long-term subs. How, how do you handle, let's say, a five-year teacher? And then you have, I mean, how do you, I would, how you use your time when you have so, such a large amount of long-term subs? And is the coaching, this is an almost rhetorical question, is coaching different for that long-term sub than it is that five-year teacher?
Well, that segue could not have been more perfect to get us into the second item, which is the educator support program, because that is exactly, you're exactly right, to your point, we have so many different pathways that educators are coming to us by, that you're absolutely right, to provide the exact same thing to every one of them would not be effective. We have, we expect teachers to differentiate for students, we should be differentiating for our teachers. So if it's okay, if there's no other questions, we can go ahead and continue on into the, to that portion, which I think will be a little bit shorter. Thank you for your patience. We just really wanted to see, have you see that part of that video. So speaking of the educator support program, this is formerly New Teacher, but we've, we're rebranding it because a lot of the teachers that are involved in this program are not new teachers. They've been teaching for a long time, they just may be coming to us from someplace else. We also have long-term subs who are not technically- We also have long-term subs who are not technically certified teachers. So I want to just refresh your memory. Last year, in the New Teacher Program, we had 69 new teachers. This year, you can tell, we have 151 total participants in our educator support program. KSDE requires us to, at a minimum, provide two years of support. So we have to look at the first year, those coming to us year one this year, as well as those who are in year two. KSDE also requires us to show, how will we provide ongoing support beyond year two to teachers? Well, for us, what we've written in is that instructional coaching support remains available to all teachers who request it beyond year two. And it's not just, it's anyone. So that's one of the ways that we do that is to say instructional coaches, if, if a teacher requests that support, that the coaches come in. But we can, we can keep going and you can, it's going to come in a little at a time. So you can just click through, there's three sections. So for educator support program, it's differentiated professional support because we need to do that. It also includes the mentoring. Those, that's for teachers who need to upgrade to their professional license. They're in a, they're on a provisional or initial license or restricted and they're wanting to move to that professional license. We, we need to provide them traditional mentoring. It's sustained, it's intensive, and it's job embedded. It, it's for teachers who are either new to the profession entirely, new to the district, or maybe they're new to their position. And it includes long-term substitutes serving in the role of classroom teacher. And the why just basically boils down to student achievement. We need to support teachers at various levels to help them deliver the best quality instruction that they possibly can, but do it in a way that honors the different experience levels, education, and all that come with this body of educators that, that we have. But ultimately, it boils down to using, improving student achievement through application of evidence-based instructional practices. It's not about learning about the practices, it's about doing those instructional practices. But again, teachers drive it. They know what their kids need and so coaches just come in and the teachers set the goal and that's how it's decided. But it's also aligned to their E4E evaluation tool. So all of the, the activities and mini-sessions and things like that that are, that are offered, it does align directly to what the building principals are then using to evaluate because we want to help teachers achieve in that as well. But again, coaches don't evaluate, they have nothing to do with that. It's important to note that mentoring is only one part of induction. Induction involves a lot of different things and it's a sustained process. We provide an orientation week, we provide mini-sessions, there's all kinds of things that happen during this process and coaching is just one part of it. So that's just, again, collective teacher efficacy is one of the top, uh, uh, loses my train of thought, one of the top effects that you can have on student achievement. We can keep going. In fact, Hattie himself, this is a quote from him. He talks about that the most important factor is teachers who look at their teaching, what are the impacts? What worked, what was taught well? And what was the size of the improvement? And they're talking about that with each other and really reflecting with one another. And he talks also about, and this is from Learning Forward, they actually wrote our professional learning standards that the state adopted. And they talk about that this induction is important whether teachers are new to the profession, new to a district, new to a classroom or position. They need support in learning their new position. Basically, collaboration leads to achievement is what it boils down to. We also remind all of the participants, everyone, that we're not just about numbers. It's, it's great to look at these things on a slide and all of that, but really, we encourage them to, to attach a face to the numbers because this is who it's about. It's about providing the best quality education that we possibly can to every student that walks into Dodge City Public Schools. But again, and we talk about the different roles and responsibilities. So we look at what are the different roles that, that are, that are within this program? It's not, if you only have one person, a mentor, trying to do it all, it's not going to be effective. Everyone plays a part. We call our instructional coaches though, the boots on the ground because they're really in there with the teacher shoulder to shoulder each day. But everyone, we ask them to demonstrate a commitment to sustained, job embedded, intensive, student-focused professional learning, regardless of your role in, in the program. I don't expect you to see this up real close, but we do have different pathways. So the, the education level, the experience level helps to determine the pathway that the, the teacher, the educator is on. And the pathway determines what activities are appropriate for support. And even within that, and again, that's very small, but you can see that it's very differentiated. Dark things happen automatically, light things, there's some choice or principal discretion. And if it's white, they don't do it at all. So as in that pathway three, you'll notice it's very, very light. That's because those are our most experienced educators. They really, there's really only one thing that we ask them to do and everything else, it's if they haven't done it before or if the principal asks them to. Our orient, that's our orientation week curriculum. The main thing is to notice that in the afternoons, we really focus on the morning they learn about their curriculum or they learn about supporting English learners, but the afternoon is spent with supported implementation. So that the goal is by the time that week is done, they're ready for those first couple days of school. They've been supported in planning for lessons that will allow them to do this. And then this is just a list of those program activities that are on that, that chart. But again, not every person does every activity. And then we, we do focus on the letters training though. If they teach reading, we do have them go through letters training. That is one thing that most of them do. So that brings you up to speed on changes that are happening. Are there any other questions? Thank you for your time, I really appreciate it.
Yeah, I have one question. I know one of the shoulder to shoulder partners and every day in the classroom is the paras. Do the coaches do anything with the paras? And I, you know, just my observation, when I was a school resource officer, the high-functioning teachers had a really high-functioning para. So how does that play into a, a new teacher and the paras' effect on their ability to be successful? And do the coaches do anything with those paras?
Um, a lot of the time, the coaches are involved in like para-trainings. How the para-trainings work that's done at the building level? So I don't know if, like, Amy, if you wanted to speak a little more about the para-training. It's getting a little more complicated for the coaches because their caseloads are so heavy, they do the best they can. So in terms of para-support, I'll let you.
Yeah, so as far as training for paras, there's a couple of different ways that, that occurs. One is during the summer institute, there is a para-institute. And so this summer, I'm not sure how many numbers were at the para-institute. There were a lot, about 150 paras at the summer institute. And then at the building level, like Kelly was saying, those are all building-driven. So I'll just give an example. As we look at the data and we're determining what types of groups or instructional focus the, there may be for different grade levels and different classrooms. Our instructional coach would, or school instructional coaches would step in and say, we noticed that we need to support the teachers on onset sounds according to the data. So then they would train the paras to be effective in that area, either in a small group or within the classroom. So really, that does take place at the, at the building level. And the coaches, principals, and sometimes the teachers step in and help support the paras with that training. And then also during the summer institute, there were different sessions that focused on the instructional piece as well as supports for behaviors and executive function skills. So there was kind of a wide variety of topics.
Yeah, I mean, the, the coaching model is very successful, I think, in just that partnership across the board. That was the one piece I wasn't hearing is how the paras play into the instruction in the classroom and all the pieces.
Good question. Anything else for Kelly and Melissa?
I promise this is the longest update I will give the whole year. I, this is just, this is the, the foundation. So thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, we are ready for district student support services and bullying prevention update. Best part of the night because the dog comes up here.
Hi, good evening, board. My name is Zelda Flores and I'm the school counselor for Northwest Elementary. And I am a substitute speaker today because Rachel Trumply is sick. So I'm just going to tell you a little bit about what we are doing in elementary and then we have high school and middle school as well. So the bully prevention program, it started this last week. We're gonna, we go full four weeks trying to do the bully prevention and educating our students to just, you know, how to report, how to, how to recognize, report and how to refuse for bullying. Oh, I turned the light off. Sorry. You can tell I'm not used to this. Okay, so I'm not going to lie, I got scared when I saw those numbers because I was like 22 to 23, is that like days? That's too much. But it's actually the year and as you can compare, 22, 23, we had 81 referrals on that subject. 22, 21, we had 24 and then as of this year, as you can tell, and it goes all the way to September 29th, we only have one so far. So those, that's, that's good. So good numbers.
Are the referrals coming from teachers, principals? How do the, how does that work?
Well, I can speak for elementary. We have a system, we have a protocol that we follow and we do, it comes from, actually, you know, it can come from people in the playground, from supervisors, and then it goes to the teacher and then the teacher actually does a referral. Yeah, I can speak for elementary.
Same.
Okay, same here. Okay, um, this is, this is what bullying is according to the state of Kansas, how it's defined. I know that, again, in elementary, we do tell children and educate them on how to identify what's, what is truly bullying versus mean or being rude. This is actually the student definition. Now, I don't know where Rachel got this from, but it's pretty much accurate because when you ask students, you know, what, what it is, this is pretty much what they tell you. So including elementary students, except kinder, they, I don't think they have an idea. These are some of the bully prevention activities that, like I said, we are doing this month. I know, speaking, and you guys will see pictures of what we are doing. Here's some for the high school and I have counselors from the high school to explain to you what they're exactly are doing.
On that, real quick, on that, sorry, on that first slide, I guess it just hit me, was that referrals for all of the elementary schools or was that just for?
District-wide.
District-wide, okay, thank you.
Okay, I am Bailey Zurger. I am the social worker at the high school. So some of the things that we've implemented this year at the high school, we have small groups going on during flex time. The five groups that we have is a mindfulness group and that's kind of like a relaxing yoga meditation type thing. We actually had Jimmy from the Wellness Yoga Studio come in and do like a mindful meditation and included like a yoga stretching and breathing with it and it was, it was really cool. And our students loved it. Then we have our moms and moms-to-be group where they learn about, you know, labor and delivery and baby products and that type of stuff. And then we have an organization and time management group. That group, they receive a planner and folders and we help them like organize their backpacks and give them folders to organize their papers for every class that they have and then learn how to kind of write in their planners about, you know, if they have work or activities or upcoming schoolwork, just to kind of help them learn to organize and manage their time. And then we have a mind and heart group. That is a group where they learn emotion regulation skills, they learn coping skills, it's more mindfulness practice, how to build positive relationships with people. It's a lot of coping skill type stuff. And then the healing and resilience group is kind of for a lot of our students that have experienced a lot of trauma and it's a little more in-depth, talking about, you know, things that they've experienced and how to build resiliency and heal from the things that they've been through.
Approximately, how many people do you have in those groups?
Um, it kind of depends, the healing and resilience and then the mindful ones, those are the two that are more like deep. And so we want to keep those a lot smaller. So 10 is about what we have. We're still working on getting a few more in that we want in there, but about 10 for those. And then in the other ones, up to like 20 or 30, so.
I'm Jennifer Mendoza and I'm one of the counselors at the high school. September 25th through the 29th was suicide prevention week. During this week, we promoted kindness and positivity. They did a sidewalk talk, um, they did chalk, uh, they did a mind, as Bailey was saying, they did a mindfulness activity where, and self-care talk. They put out positive messages, they did a table talk and a yellowout checking in with, and they did checking in with someone. Club Rush is an opportunity where they had the, all the clubs that came out, sponsors came out and the kids had an opportunity to get an idea of what clubs we offer at the high school. We did freshmen and sophomores one Monday and then we did juniors and seniors the following Monday. So we were really encouraging kids to start participating. As you know, if they feel connectedness to the school, then they are less likely to be bullied or to be bullies because they feel a connectedness. So we were trying to really promote the clubs and activities and trying to get our kids to be more involved in that. God, I'm stunned. Character Strong, as you know, Character Strong is our new, um, social emotional curriculum. Thank you. Our social emotional curriculum that we just added this year that we're doing, middle school and high school. And teachers have reported that the curriculum is going very well and the kids are actually having a good time with it and getting the chance to interact with the teachers a lot
Just one question. When you, your suicide, your suicide prevention, when you get wind that a child, a student is going through something, what's your protocol? What, what, what do you do as a, as a group of counselors? How do you handle that?
So we have the MHIP or, yeah, MHIP form. And so, and it actually kind of walks us through how to handle that. But basically, you know, we talk with them, we first contact parents, have the parents come, and then we fill out the MHIP form. And it just asks them more in, like, serious in-depth questions. And then depending on their answers to those questions, it get, we send them to Compass Behavioral Health for them to be evaluated by a more professional person that can kind of determine whether or not they need to be hospitalized or if they just need a safety plan. And then if they do just get a safety plan, we get the safety plan and then we kind of help implement things that they can do at school to, to, you know, make sure the safety plan is going through. And we do that when they get back from a hospital too.
Very good. I, I just dealt with a situation, not in our district, but in another district of 24-hour watch.
Yes.
And I just want to know the protocol, thank you.
Yeah, we definitely never, you know, leave them alone.
Right.
We always, you know, we kind of go over with the parents, make sure, you know, there's not, they don't have access to things at home that they can harm themselves with, that type of kind of stuff too.
Thank you.
Yeah. So be the one club. This is a club that we kind of run as counselors, but it kind of, we help promote positivity in the school. So a lot of the suicide prevention week, the bullying month, and anything positive in the community, we're going to help like with the manna house, that type of stuff. we're gonna help like with the manor house, that type of stuff, anything like that. Be The One Club kind of takes that on. So, it's more student-led so that more people get involved and it's not just us counselors like saying all this stuff, it's the students that are involved in part of it, too. So, a lot of the things that we're doing for this month for anti-bullying, we have these anonymous boxes that they created where there's a question on the box and it'll say, you know, just asking them about bullying, if they've ever been bullied or their mental health, and then they can write it on there. That way, we can kind of just see some responses and get some feedback from students on how bullying is at the high school and then mental health, too. And then we're gonna greet students at the doors as they come in and give them the suicide prevention wristbands and then we always try to just spread positive messages, you know, posts and stuff up on the hall, in the halls and then passing, you know, little notes with a piece of candy to a kid that says, you know, "You're loved" or anything positive, we do that as well.
Cups of Kindness, our JAG program is doing cups of kindness in their classroom and around the school and this is where students have wrote a quote on a cup that has helped them get through a tough time in their life. And so, on various whiteboards or on various boards in the hallways, you can find cups with different sayings on them and, and the kids can kind of take those cups as they need to be refilled.
So, then we have our individual counseling going on. We do that kind of throughout the year. So, our senior counselors are working on getting, doing the senior check-ins with kids. Ms. Mendoza is checking in with the freshmen and then social workers are checking in with kind of our high needs, tier three kids as well. And then here is some pictures of Charlie and her interaction with some students. I wanted to share a really cool story with you guys. Cooper, he is the one in the bottom with the blue, with the headphones on his head. So, he is one of our special education kids and he was really struggling one day. He came in in tears and just really overstimulated from the class he was in. And he came in and he sat down on the floor and Charlie went over to him and he pet her for a little while and he actually was able to really open up to me and tell me kind of what he was struggling through in his class because he was sitting there petting Charlie and he was able to get himself together and feel a lot better and be able to go on to class and finish the rest of his day. And typically, he really struggles to, you know, get himself regulated and get back to class. So, I thought that was kind of a cool story to share. But she's been making a really big impact on students when she's not there. Everybody's like, "Where is Charlie?" They always want to know and our sped students absolutely love her and all of our students do. We've done some reading time in some of our English classes. So, we just go in there and sit with some kids while they read. We've done fishing with the, some of our PE classes at Demon Lake. And then we've talked in our health science classes about stress and anxiety management and then kind of what Charlie does. And then she's provided a lot of support for teachers. They also love to come and pet her. And yeah, so she's really connected with a lot of people and I have seen a huge positive impact. There'll be students walking in the hall that look super, you know, down or they're just like walking through their day and when they see her, they smile and they come over and pet her, so, you know, you can really see a big impact that she has.
Is she in the building every day?
Most of the time, I coach volleyball, so if I have a game, I usually don't bring her just in case something crazy happens and I can't take her home. But I bring her, you know, pretty regularly, at least two or three times a week, so.
So, when you go home at night, has she had enough?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
She's overstimulated.
Yeah, she's so tired, she'll go right to bed and, but when we get up in the morning, she knows where we're going and when we pull into the parking lot, she gets all excited and she, she's loving it, so. Any other questions?
I got a question and I don't know quite how to ask it, but we, in our family right now, we have some children in our home. And the social emotional, you know, issues are real and they are, and I've become far more aware of it and far more aware of talking to parents who's, and then I talked to a school nurse and last year, and they were telling me that most of the kids that come into their offices are more emotional, mental health issues than they are physical. Says, you know, "We can handle fevers and, you know, cuts and scrapes and those things." First of all, I want to tell you how much I appreciate you guys, but also, are you, lack of better words, how's the emotional health of our kids right now, emotional health of our kids right now?
I would say, I mean, we're at the high school with 2,000 kids.
Right.
It's a lot and I'm very thankful to have a big team to support each other because it, it can be a lot, for sure. It's, our kids go through a lot, especially our, at the high school level and I know elementary and middle school, it's a, it's a whole different story. But at the high school, you know, they're taking care of their, their younger siblings a lot and they're working and they're paying the bills and so they have a lot on their plate and they just sometimes hit a wall and they need to just let it all out. And so, that's kind of what we're here to help with.
Sometimes school just isn't the priority for them.
Pardon?
Sometimes school's not a priority for them.
Oh, I, I.
Things going on at home.
I can testify to that.
Yeah, there's other priorities and so it's helping them justify why school's still important.
Right. No, I, I just, I, I, I'm, almost get choked up when I think about it. That, anyway, we don't, but I just, I appreciate you. And, and I want you to know that we, I can't speak for every board member, but I can speak for me. I, I have a clue now how serious these issues are and we want to support you in every, I want to make sure that we support you as much as we possibly can. Thank you.
I, I've got one final question, I'm sorry. Kind of piggyback off of Jeff's question about the suicide prevention. So, if I come to one of the counselors, not in reference to me, but for example, hey, I was talking to Jeff, he's struggling, maybe talking about hurting himself. Are you proactive in a sense where you will go and, and get, okay? Okay.
Even if it's just briefly, like, I, we always try to move with that. We'll take experience.
Thank you.
Thank you, Louise.
Bye, Charlie.
I am Amanda Rich and today I'm here representing both Dodd City Middle Schools. I am one of the two counselors at Dodd City Middle School. We, I kind of piggybacked off the high school because we are able to align with them fairly well as to what we do within our building. We got little mini grownups in our building.
Next, thank you.
So, every, we always are doing individual counseling, both Ann and I see probably, I'd say 12 students every single day, if not more. We work with them, we work one-on-one to build relationships. We're currently on a mission to meet with every single student throughout the school year. We have small little questionnaires, what we're asking them to get to know them and just to genuinely see if they need anything from us, whatever it may be. Maybe the home needs something and we will find any type of resources to make sure that they get the adequate care that they need. Currently, this month and really every month, we send out information via talking points. It's been a really great tool for our building as well as I'm sure all buildings in our district. Currently, we put in school bulletins as well, so both, in the talking points this month, they're receiving weekly mini newsletters having to do with what is bullying, how to combat it. If your child comes to you and tells you they're being bullied or their friend is being bullied, what would the next step be, which would be to contact us so we can partnership with that and get that solved as best as we can. And as well, we put all that information in the school bulletins as well. This month especially, every Thursday and Tuesday of the month, we are spreading out anti-bullying tips and facts throughout our morning announcements, throughout the intercom, during our morning announcements, every single Tuesday and Thursday throughout the month. These facts are as simple as what is bullying, what is not bullying? If your friend is feeling bullied, what should you do? Simple facts like that, that I feel like sometimes we forget. And so, it's a nice little reminder, especially this month. For suicide prevention, there are posters available posted throughout our entire building with resources, including warning signs as well as to help a friend. We currently are also putting them in the stalls in each of our bathrooms, just to give them a little reminder, if this is something you guys are running into, what, where to go for help. In our building, both Ann and I teach classroom lessons typically every other week to all sixth, seventh and eighth graders. Currently, we are working on, working on our IPS, but this month, we're saving some time for bullying prevention, just kind of going a little more in-depth with what I've already discussed with our students, specifically what is bullying, what are the types of bullying and what can I do to help stop it? We talked about being an active stopper instead of a passive stopper and just allowing things to go because sometimes when you're 12, that's kind of easy to just let that go instead of doing something about it, whether it's to you or to somebody else to help prevent it from happening to a third party. This year, we are very blessed with middle school and high school to be able to receive the curriculum of Character Strong. Each of our advisory teachers are teaching it and I've had several reports of how incredible it has become in each of their classrooms. There are several different tiered lessons, so one class could be teaching it one way or another class could be teaching it a different way, but they all get the same information. So, the teachers are really allowed to go in there and choose which little elements of the lessons would work best for their class because they know their class better than we do. But they've really enjoyed it, the kids are really enjoying a lot of the different activities that are provided for them. And then both Student Council and National Junior Artist Society, along with some other students, have partnered up this month and we are working on chalking the entryways to the school. Today was supposed to be the day, but we had a last-minute basketball meeting. So, it will be next week. They'll be chalking the walkways during advisory for messages of positivity and letting the kids know we're genuinely excited that they're in our building every day. We're also hoping to pass out resources to the students as they enter the building, especially during Red Ribbon Week with Stuko. And that is it in our building. We're hoping to be able to get with every single one of our students, though, to genuinely see where they're at and hopefully, if there, we're meeting with them frequently, we're able to figure out any other potential issues, whether it be bullying or suicide prevention that we're able to be proactive with instead of being reactive once it comes to us.
I do have a question, Amanda. I know just because middle school kids have like three emotions, they're, they're in love, fighting or crying.
Yes.
But do you track when bullying instances happen, not only for the child who's getting bullied or the person who is the bully? Because I, you know, when we look at national media and one of the first things they say on a suicide that catches that national media is they've been bullied for a long time and who did or did not do anything, I imagine, but can you kind of describe how we track?
Yeah, so at Dodd City, I can only speak for Dodd City Middle School, but at Dodd City Middle School, we have incident report sheets, they're bright yellow sheets, that whenever there's any type of incident in our building, the students that are involved or witnesses fill out that sheet and with that, we keep it and both Ann and I enter those notes into our guidance panel within Skyward, so we are able to keep track of things. Something we're really working on with students is reporting those incidents. A lot of the times, we get reports that they've been bullied for months, but we haven't been told anything. So, we're really working on empowering them, being able to report things and letting them know that we're gonna do something about it, we're not just going to allow this to continue happening to you. So, keeping track of those things and our notes really do come in handy if we were to ever come up with anything.
Does that follow them through buildings?
Yes. So, our notes, our guidance notes in Skyward follow from building to building. However, we will, like I would notice, Elda has spoken with a student 12 times in a year. I would call her and say, "Hey, what do your notes say? What can you give me to help the student? Are there any potential issues with this student and anybody else?" We do a lot of that information in our fifth grade meetings and we see which students have had potential issues, whether it be bullying or they just don't get along. And so, we're very proactive within creating their schedules to try to avoid any of those possible incidents from occurring at the middle school.
Awesome, thanks. So, does this include cyberbullying too or is it just?
We, we do handle that when, especially when it comes to cyberbullying because the majority of it is done outside of our building. We're always getting our parent, their parents involved and just letting them know, "Hey, your student has this app, they have been contacting this person, this is what has happened" or "There has been a conflict on your child's phone, whether it be through text messaging or whatever it is." And just letting the parents know, be checking their phones, be having these conversations with them at home and we always give them the resources to contact the police department in case it is a true, real incident, whether it be bullying or harassment.
Okay, and then we just have some slides to show you. This month, as we said, we are really syncing. I mean, we're communicating with middle school and high school as well. So, we're on the same page and this month, we started, like I said, last week with our second step bully prevention lessons, which we, in elementary, we go once a week and then we teach them and then we supplement some resources and lessons to the teachers so they can go and teach during their SCL lessons, once a week or twice a week, depending on the lesson that they want to or activity that they want to do. We have Spirit Week celebrations coming up at the end of the month. We have bullying pledges, we have been focusing on kindness and just spreading, you know, more of a unity and inclusion throughout elementary schools as well. So, these are some of the pictures that, not working, maybe? Okay, that's, oh, also by beginnings, we have, from by beginnings, we have a representative who also attends our meetings with, you know, our counselor meetings and this is what they're doing for Spirit Week. This is Beeson. Central. This is Lynn and I wish I could just see that far, but we all, like I said, we all coordinate, we do different things, you know, for our students. We get creative, each one of us, I think that we have a special talent. I promise I have more than that. I think we are actually, and I can speak for my school, that we are, besides doing the Red Ribbon Week, we are also creating a big unity tree. We celebrate on the 18th of this month, Unity Day. So, we are, I, we are creating a big tree with orange leaves that have, that will have a word or two words or a message that is, that promotes kindness. There's Ross Elementary. Sewell. And I think that's the last one, if I'm not wrong.
Right?
Okay, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Great presentation, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, we are ready for the update on mental health.
Good evening, board and Dr. Dirksen. I wasn't sure how close I should stand because I have a really loud voice. So, I just wanted to give an update on the MHIT grant, which was a grant that we applied for at the end of our summer and were awarded. And so, with this grant, we were able to hire six, they're called school liaisons in the grant, but we have titled them behavior interventionists. So, we've been able to hire six behavior interventionists. We currently have four at the elementary schools, one that goes between both middle schools and then one at the high school. The elementary school behavior interventionists are housed at obviously two different schools, so they share between Ross and Lynn, Beeson and Sunnyside, Central and Miller and then Northwest and Sewell. Their role in the schools is more than this, but this is just kind of a brief rundown. They go in and observe in the classroom, so some of the things that they will do at that time is monitor time on task, they help identify what's happening maybe before behavior occurs, supporting the teacher through interventions. They also support students through small, small social skills groups. They also can meet with students individually as well. They attend the cares meetings at each building, they assist with behavior and safety plans, they make contact with our families, so they're really helping us bridge that gap between family, school and then the mental health supports. And then they also are in charge of really identifying those students who would benefit from receiving the mental health services in the school. So, we currently have 21 students that we have signed consent for, for the grant. We are partnered, part of the grant, you have to be partnered with your community mental health center, which here is Compass Behavioral Health. So, they are also providing us with, one, two, three, four, five. So, they are also providing us with, one, two, three, five, six, five and a half, because one, they're switching. But they have provided, they're part of the grant, is to provide us with case management services that come in the school, as well as therapy. So, we have one therapist at this time that will be coming into the schools and providing therapy there. We currently have four students that have completed the forms for the case management services, and they are awaiting their intake. And then, we have three that are currently awaiting the initial intake into therapeutic services. So, we are really moving forward with working on getting those mental health services in the school. Our mental health team, behavior interventionists, myself and Leah Springsteen, meet weekly. Our purpose of meeting is to, one, try and train them, because they just got hired in August, and then we threw them in the first day of school and said, welcome to education. So, we work to try and train them during that weekly meeting. We're working together as a team to streamline their process, what their day-to-day looks like, as well as meeting monthly with Compass to check and make sure that we have the, we have all of the referrals accounted for. I also conduct weekly check-ins with each individual behavior interventionist, just to provide them with that extra support. I do have some positive pieces to share. We typically like to start our meeting with some sort of celebration, and last week, I asked them to share any positive comment or note that they have received from anyone in their building, and all of the interventionists that were in attendance last week shared how thankful the teachers were. Teachers are coming to them and thanking them for being in the building. They feel supported, they feel heard, and they just genuinely appreciate the work that our behavior interventionists are doing. And so, that was really nice to hear. And then, also hearing their relationships that they're building with the teachers is also a positive experience. They've had to work to kind of gain the trust of our teachers, and rightfully so, and so they're putting themselves out there to be able to do that. So, they're establishing those positive relationships with teachers as well. We do a, like I mentioned, a monthly check-in with Compass and their team. That consists of the case managers, the therapist, and then Richard and Angie. We are obviously in constant communication with Compass, so Richard probably gets tired of hearing from me, but he still answers. We also attend state check-ins via Zoom, so every other Tuesday, I believe, we all get on a Zoom link, and sometimes we meet here at the admin building and watch it together. Other times, the interventionists will just hop on the Zoom at their building. We will be going as a team to Hays on this Friday to do a regional check-in, because we're one of the newer districts to have applied for and received this grant, and we're also one of the largest, so we're kind of excited to see what, what other districts are doing, especially those who have been utilizing this grant for quite some time. Then, next week, there is another meeting in Hays. Not the whole team will be going, but we will be sharing, obviously, the information learned from that time. Our behavior interventionists also attend professional development opportunities, so we had a couple of them that were able to attend the MTSS Symposium in Wichita in September. They shared recently about those experiences for the three or four days, two days that we were there. They were very appreciative of getting that experience, because it helped explain a little bit more about how school systems work and how classrooms operate, so they were very appreciative of that. And then, we have the Great Minds Conference coming up, the 25th through the 27th of this month, and so, the rest of our team will be attending that, and then we will be coming back and sharing information from that conference. So, I think, yeah, that's it. Do you have any questions for us, me, here?
That's great information.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you get an information overload yet?
Yeah.
I was asked, you know, to present at some point, some attendance and some discipline update. First off, on the attendance, I put in a weekend review the last week about chronic absenteeism data, and how we're tweaking some of the way it's recorded in Skyward to really reflect the definition of chronic absenteeism, which is gonna make our numbers look a lot better, but let's not mistake the fact that we still have a huge attendance issue, a lot of times, the first period, second period, so we're still doing a lot of work on that. Our attendance officer's already seen over 30 home visits this year, so he's been very active, getting out and helping find kids, get them in school, but the biggest thing we're pushing, we even pushed it last year, but is the educating parents. I mean, when you really think about it, whether it's unexcused or excused absences, they're still missing school, you know? So, we, we try to teach parents the fact that you need to get your kid there as much as possible. I mean, if they, if they're not really sick, get them to school, you know? If it's just a minor cough, get them to school, but reach out, our clerks will help, you know? We're really trying to identify those barriers and get them the supports they need to get the kids there. So, Judy right now is working on changing that up, so when she gets that chronic absenteeism, the way it's recorded, that'll definitely change our numbers, because just, I don't know if you had a chance to read it, but anytime a kid missed one period, it was counting as a whole half-day of school, and it was adding those half-days up cumulatively, as opposed to the definition of chronic absenteeism, which is missing a full day of school. So, it made our numbers look a little rough, but we still have some work to do. I mean, there's no sugarcoat in it, so. You guys even have questions on the chronic absenteeism? And I will present you guys more information, like I said, once Judy gets all that taken care of, so you can truly see kind of what it would look like.
How many kids do we refer to truancy?
Here's the deal with truancy. For those that don't know, truancy is described as three days in a row, five days a semester, seven days in a year. We have probably a couple thousand that would meet that definition. What we try to do with truancy is work with the courts in the sense of, if a kid's missing school, and we reach out to them through the clerks, and it works, just like other interventions, we keep doing that. If it's not working, the principal gets involved, and hope it works there, we keep doing that. If it's working, if not, we refer them over to the divert program and our district attendance officer. We really start referring them once we're getting no support from home. I mean, because the courts right now, I mean, we probably have, I would say, 60, 70 kids, I mean, just guessing, I don't have the exact number, but just reading through the dockets that come through, either truancy or CINC cases, and it's even hard for them to keep up. I mean, they just don't have the resources either. So, we try to really do a lot of the work in-house, and really just use truancy when we know there's either family issues, or we're not getting any response. I mean, the parents just aren't working with us, you know, because we can't refer every single kid. So, I can get you the exact numbers, but that's kind of how we do it right now.
Matt, I'm sorry, I was, I was reading this handout when you were making your opening. After Tracy, yeah, after Tracy had asked her question, you'd said something about a few thousand can meet that criteria. Could you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Missing seven days in a school year, you know, is not that uncommon anymore. You know, three days in a row, five in a semester, seven a year, isn't that uncommon? When you consider chronic absenteeism as 10% or more, that's 17 days. We have a large number of that, we're only talking seven. Now, it goes back to the excused, unexcused. Most parents are gonna call the kid in, and they're gonna say they're sick, or they're, so you mark it excuse, so it's kind of, that's why we use the, the family's support and the efforts to get back in school is kind of a gauge, because we know sometimes they're just at home, so we've kind of got to balance that. So, it's tough. I mean, any other questions on that chronic absenteeism?
I would be interested, and I know you'll give it to us, but how the, the tru- officer, is that the right word for him?
District attendance officer.
Yes. How, how having him full-time and, and doing the different things that he's doing.
Let me tell you, one of the things he's done early this year is he's worked with the elementary schools on their family nights, educating parents. I mean, really talking to them about the importance of attendance, focusing on not unexcused or excused, you're missing school, you know, and working with the families. So, really, the big piece of it's education, and representing the court, and doing the home visits, and I know he's out at all the schools a lot, just trying to help out the clerks and do what he can. I mean, we really want the clerks to be good cop, I mean, really building those relationships with the families, so they'll share information of why they're not in school, and they can support them. Unfortunately, his role sometimes is being the enforcer when we're not getting a response, so.
Matt, it, your categories here, what is, of course, I understand the violence piece, but it says slash adult?
Okay, so.
What is, what is that?
Ahead of the discipline piece.
Oh, okay. Oh, sorry, okay.
You're fine, I just.
Okay.
This sheet here is what I want to, it's kind of interesting, because as you can see, it looks like we have a whole lot more majors up to this point, this year. But one thing we've really been adamant about is making sure we're recording everything. You know, when there's something in there, we record it, because as Tracy asked earlier, how do we know sometimes? Well, when we record it, it allows us to pull majors and possibly identify kids who might need some additional support, because they're having multiple major offenses. So, by recording everything, it allows our counselors, our principals, to really target some kids who are, they're leading down that destructive behavior thing. In regards to that violence against adult, Tracy asked this earlier, what that is, is since we're recording everything, so it's mostly younger, when we're trying to work with kids who have some major disruptions, and they'll let hit, and I'm talking like five, six-year-old kids who will hit, so we're recording it, not only because we want to know when those incidents are happening, but also, are we seeing a positive change in that down the road? So, if this, if we have a hitter, and they're doing it regularly, well, maybe by the end of the year, they're not doing it, so what were we doing to help educate that kid the rights and wrongs of it? So, it's more about just being very diligent and recording the offenses. But as you can see, smoking and the vaping is still a problem. I mean, it's going up. We do work with MD Anderson in a program, the secondary is called Aspire. It's a, it's a cessation program that helps teach kids the wrongs of it, so we try to really work, especially on the, on the cigarette smoking, the, you know, education, and, and also punitive, I mean, there's got to be some punishment for it. When it's THC, still do the same thing, but we do have to refer that over to law enforcement, and Juvenile Services works with them through an IDP program, and that program's trying to prevent them from entering the court system, so they'll work with them to have them do classes and things like that, instead of falling right into the court system. So, we have pieces in place. I know we need to do a little better job on making sure those education pieces are in place for the smoking, because it's, it's bad. I mean, there's no, no. So, any other questions over this? I mean, I kind of, I didn't really go through it a ton, but you can see on there basically where our numbers are pretty steady. It's just, like I said, the disruption piece, we allowed our staff to have it out, in the sense of when that disruption truly is a, wrecks the classroom environment to put it in. Last year was kind of, the impression was you had to have at least three, and then it would refer to the office. We allow them, if they want to mark it as a major, that's why you see a lot more of that, and that way, we can get in there immediately and try to help out, so. But it's really another piece, too, is we use that data to determine who are kids that might need some immediate assistance.
Do we have vaping sensors and stuff in the bathrooms, high school? Is that?
Yeah.
We do, okay. Is that a deterrent? Do they, do these things work? Have we?
They work, because.
They do, okay.
I can hear the radio go off, the sensor went off.
Okay.
I can, and I can tell you, it keeps them busy at times. I would, I would have to defer to the principals to tell you if it's something that we think now, over time, it's kept kids from doing it. I mean, but.
I, I couldn't remember if we did or not. That was really my main question, so we do, okay.
Gilbert, did you have something you wanted to add to that? Okay. You kind of acted like you.
He just knew what we were talking about.
But everything that's been talked about tonight is efforts, and we appreciate it, to, you know, help kids. I mean, they, as Jeff mentioned, sometimes if you're not there in the front line, you don't always really understand all the things those kids are going through, and, and we appreciate everything and all the support, and our MHIT team has been great. I think one of the things that's hard to quantify is the human factor of them, I mean, just being in the buildings to provide that additional support, or when that kid's kind of going off the rails, that they'll take that kid and just give everybody a little bit of a break, that's hard to, it's hard to put a number on how poor that is, so.
Well, I, I just, I don't think, if, if you haven't seen it, and I was ignorant for most of my life, the conditions that some of these young people come out of to walk into a school, it is, it is, I, I don't know how they can sit and learn. I mean, we're trying to right societal wrongs, that societal problems, and it's kind of tough to do it when they walk out of a tough, tough situation, to even sit in the structure of a classroom, so.
I appreciate all the effort you put in, Matt, to put this all together, and, and for everyone that presented. And my closing remarks I wanted to share with the board is, I hope you see the correlation of how all of these different programs that provide support all connect, and all lead to the end result of, of the work that we have to do with absenteeism, with discipline, with all these issues that exist. And I know as board members, you hear a lot from the community, well, why can't they read? Why can't they do math? And believe me, we heard also from Kelly, we're working on those things, we're, we're trying to make the best teachers we've ever had, and, and we're making strides in doing that as well. So, I hope this helped bring together the efforts that are collectively being made, and the work that we have going on, because it's frustrating, the legislature has a way of always turning this into a test score. And believe me, when I tell you, this is much deeper, as we heard tonight, than just a number on a child. And, and we care about every one of them, you heard that tonight, and, and I was proud of the answers and the questions that you guys asked, because we don't let a child tell us there might be an incident. We look into it, because we care about every single one of them. And so, so I hope, I mean, I realize this took a lot of time, but it's what's going on, it's who we are, and, and I appreciate you being here tonight and taking part in that, so.
I'd just like to say one more thing, too. You know, the counselors, they, if it was only just dealing with the social, emotional of their jobs, but they also still have the education piece, the career piece, the, all that other stuff, so, I mean, it's a, it's a huge task, you know? Just when they're getting started on something, there's always a kid that has a need, you know, so.
A lot of moving parts.
It's a ton of work. Next month, too, Amanda mentioned it briefly, but they will be presenting on the IPS, which is Individual Plans of Study, which is a whole nother piece of helping kids prepare themselves for life, too. I have to take off, but thank you very much. If you have any questions, shoot them my way, and we'll be more than happy to present more information, and I'll get you the actual chronic absenteeism numbers, too.
This has been good. Thanks, Matt.
See you, Matt.
All right, we've got approval of laptops, a little switch here, Todd.
Yeah, good evening, Board. What I have for you to consider tonight is purchase of laptop computers from Sterling Computers. The, the amount that we're asking for, there's a set of 25 there for the cart that's around the corner that's used here in the conference rooms, they're used for meetings, even testing at times, and training, so we've always had a need for a set of laptops in our conference center, so the ones in the cart now, they're at least five years old, so it's time to, to upgrade those. And then, the other set of 12 is just for inventory through, throughout the year. There's just needs that come up that, that are unforeseen, whether it be, you know, a rare occasion, you might have a laptop, teacher laptop that lost, stolen, broken, around, on repair, and, but then, I think jobs change, or how people do their jobs change, and we get requests for laptops from time to time throughout the year, so we just like to have a inventory, and that doesn't just seem like a nice number based on past years of experience, just to have on hand, because we'll, we'll go through those probably throughout the school year, it seems like, so. The, the company, Sterling Computers, we've dealt with them a lot, they have a state bid, so we have the set of 12 and the set of 25 from Sterling for $35,728. And I believe those are, from what I understand, they're in stock, they can ship fairly quick, so I think we'll be good, so. Any questions?
I'll make a motion for approval.
I'll second it.
We've got a motion by Tammy, and a second by Jeff to approve the laptop purchase. All in favor? Hi. Five, zero, thanks, Todd.
Thank you.
Carrie's ready to go.
Good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Dirksen. I'm presenting this evening on Peach Jar, which is actually a digital e-flyer service for families and for the district. As an overview, we have been just slammed with requests for flyers, and that continues to grow. This provides us a very easy way to approve them, get them out to families. What is ideal about it is that the flyers will be sent to families through their Skyward email address, and that separates us from talking points, because that way, that can go and be scheduled every Friday, they receive that info. They receive that information and it keeps us, keeps it out of talking points. So that can be that one-on-one communication between teacher and families, school building families, and district office out to families. The other thing is that it allows on each school page, they can have a Peachjar link right there. So if they have flyers within the school that's like specific to like Ross, that can be there as well. So they can house their flyers there. There's just one place where everybody can go to get the flyers, specific to the school. But then the district has that and we will be sending out those links on a weekly basis. It will go every week, same time, so parents know when to receive it. From the principal's standpoint, I've had one share with me, that makes it a little bit easier for like the YMCA flyers. If someone says, hey, where is that? They would get calls about that. They, parents will know, families will know where they can go to retrieve those flyers. For the community member, it's pretty easy to upload that. You could upload your nonprofit status, then you're approved that way. If for some reason your event charges, there's a fee with the event or camp or that kind of thing, you'll pay a $25 fee to upload that flyer. If it's free, then the uploading the flyer will be a free service to you, to the nonprofit. So it helps us streamline the efforts on the district level, makes it much easier for the approval process. It makes it much easier and I think better for the families to have the flyers handled that way. It's digital only. We no longer will be putting flyers in backpacks. So it's kind of a win-win. There is a one-time fee. It's $1 per student. That's what it's based on. And it's not an annual fee. It's just a one-time fee. So this is for information only this evening. I wanted to share the ideas, the company that we went out and researched. There are several schools in Kansas that use this service as well. But I'll follow up at a later date once Hammer and I decide what bucket of, to find the funds.
I appreciate the effectiveness of talking points being separated from this. I think.
That's a much better communication strategy.
The talking points I've gotten in the last week were all flyers.
Right.
So it, it takes out the effectiveness of that communication significantly. So I appreciate that. And it's a good investment in being a good steward for the community, this initial investment we're taking. But it's all about that external columns.
Any questions? If not, then I will have a follow-up. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie. All right. Mr. Russell?
Good evening, board members. I just have two things for you tonight. The first one I kind of alluded to at the last meeting, it's another change order for the Memorial Stadium project. And it's really three different things that we lumped together. You can see there's two deducts and then an add. The deducts are changes to landscaping. Honestly, I guess we weren't paying as close attention to some of the details. When, what you have is you've got a structural engineer making sure everything's sound and another engineer making sure the slope's right for the parking lots. And then somebody's figuring out what kind of seed and trees need to be planted. And basically what you have is the hill over there where the transfer station is, is in buffalo grass, which now won't match the fescue, which is way across on the other side. If you have a real heartache with that, we can leave it like it is. Or, because the plan actually, sorry, I didn't catch this, but the plan actually calls to kill all that buffalo grass. Put in irrigation, plant fescue. Really didn't think anybody was going to have a problem. If we left the grass alone, it's a lot easier to maintain. So there's, there's a few other landscaping changes in there, but that's honestly the, the biggest issue. And then the other one, the other deduct is a change over the entrance that we don't really use anymore off of Comanche Street. Changing and putting some gates in there that are actually cheaper than what was originally designed. So you have two deducts and then in, in the backup, you can kind of see, I mentioned that in the new parking area, we didn't have some sidewalks and, so zero sidewalks. And what we need is some sidewalks with some ramps to accommodate people that have strollers. We have stairs, we have ramps for the cars, but we don't really have a good way to isolate the pedestrian traffic, especially if you're someone that's pushing a stroller. So it, it shows an extended ramp going from the upper lot down into the lower lot, primarily to help. Well, anybody can walk on it, but it'll accommodate people with strollers. So the, the gist of that is mostly adding sidewalks. So that's the, the addition. It still ends up as a net deduction of 2900, you know, $2,976.50 credit to us. But we're trading some buffalo grass for some sidewalks. That'll actually make things safer. So.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right. We've got a motion by Tracy and a second by Ryan to approve the change order number two for Memorial Stadium Project Parking Lots. All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero.
Thank you.
Next is just the purchase of several dip, and I apologize, I didn't itemize that out very well. I mean, you can see the bid, but it's a little complicated. But basically it's for the purchase of cameras for our security system. Roughly 55 of those would be new cameras, 15 of them would be replacements. There's at least two servers in there for storage. There's some addition to cameras over at the stadium and, as well. So again, the majority of them are new cameras, but there is 15 of them that are just being replaced. Those are items that we can purchase those several different ways. You know, you, we can take them out of building maintenance, but making, it's, it's easier to go around and just try to put in one order a year. So that's what, doesn't mean we won't have forgotten something. But we've tried to do a good job of looking where we've had blind spots. And, and so some of the schools have requested a couple additional cameras in various areas. And, and then we've had our tech look at them. And then also Mr. Lampy, our security director's been involved in, in that as well. So they have a plan on where they're going to go. And I think there's four spares built into this number here as well. But ideally, we, we kind of want to try to just do one large purchase a year and, and get it knocked out at one time. So that's why we're bringing it to you and that's why it costs this much at this time.
Make a motion?
A second. We've got a motion by Tracy and a second by Tammy. All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Try to hit some brief bullet points for the roundup. There's some information I do want to share. I just received tonight, actually found out when I got here that KSB had just sent out their draft policy position, which is very similar to what it was last year. I emailed it to each one of you. So if you haven't checked your email, you can look that up and just look at the red print because that's the only changes they've made. Lisa and I and Ryan attended the KSB policy meeting that they had and they kind of explained it, I think, very self-explanatory. So the main thing I want you to know is we just got that. I also just wanted to point out a little factoid that our enrollment is always a very fluid animal. And even today, there were people lined up in the office. The most recent I have is from last Friday. Last Friday's enrollment shows an increase of 25 students since Count Day. Thought that was very interesting that our numbers keep going up and, and we've added that much. So that's interesting. I also, I just want you to be aware on a personal note that my oldest daughter is expecting a baby within nine days of, is her due date. And so because I do have some vacation time, I expect to take a couple of grandpa days coming up. And you may not see me here. So I'm excited about that. I, every year go to the Kansas Missouri Superintendent Leadership Forum. And I can tell you with, without reservation that probably the best session I've ever attended was the one I just got back from. There were several breakout sessions and the simple reality is, and I'm, I'm not looking for sympathy, I'm telling you what I attended, okay? But the superintendent job is a very tough one. It's a very isolated position. It's a very heavily involved with emotions and with difficulties. We heard from the superintendent at Joplin, former superintendent at Joplin, when the tornado went through in 2011, how his life drastically changed. This event happened in 2011. He shared on the screen a text he received last Wednesday, which would have been two Wednesdays ago now, of someone still accusing him of taking money. He is still conspiracy, conspiracy wanted by members of the community because of the way things laid out in the incident. And there, there were superintendents that talked about having to be police escorted home because of decisions that are being made at board meetings and, and the scrutiny that is going on across our nation with the two sides having such difficult times. Believe it or not, it was very comforting to hear that you may not have it as deep as others have it. So very interesting to, to hear from them and to ask yourself, why are you still doing this? I mean, some people go through some really crazy things. But the most interesting thing of all that we've all got to pay attention to was the talk about artificial intelligence. And the new app that is going around that kids have known about for two years before we knew about it, this ChatGPT, that can write an essay in 10 seconds, that can make a job resume in 10 seconds, can give you a menu with a week's worth of planning in table form in 10 seconds. And the fact that we need to not be afraid of it, we need to learn about it and to figure out how to make it an effective tool because without a doubt, it's the way the world is going. Every one of us have been suspect to artificial intelligence, whether we know it or not. In the things that we read, the forms that we fill out, the, the work that we're doing, artificial intelligence is already there. And so basically it was, you better get on the train or you're going to miss the ride. And that was really eye-opening. And, and the guy, the guy knew what he was talking about, was very informative, said also that it must be regulated. There has to be oversight. But, but that, you know, he compared it to when the calculators came out. I'm a gray here. I can talk about it. You know, math teachers were afraid kids would never know how to add, subtract, multiply, and divide. And now we don't even think about it. Now we have the calculator on our watch. So anyway, great, great session. I just wanted you to know that. Then I'm honored to also tell you that I was asked through an invitation last week to be on Commissioner Watson's Advisory Council. There's only about 10 superintendents in the whole state that get this invitation. And it only took me 42 years to get there, but I'm kind of proud of the fact that I'm finally there. So that was a kind of a big deal for me. And then a couple of things that came our way, things were happening every day, all the time. And I, two of these things I didn't even know about. But over the weekend, there was a Kansas Wrestling Association's convention and our own Luke Barker was the 6A Wrestler of the Year last year, won an award for that. His mother and father were there on his behalf because he's working his tail off up in North Dakota. And yes, that's AC Barker. You talk about stress and changing jobs and how much it makes you relax. Look at that dude. Does he look like he's on vacation or what? I love that guy. And so I, I thought that was cool. And then secondly, and I found this out even later, but our custodial crew was recognized for an award that was for the Most Outstanding Support Crew in the state of Kansas.
Wow.
Yeah. And so, and literally, we just learned about this three, maybe four hours ago. So we'll do a lot of putting this out and, and they deserve, look, look at that award. 6A Boys Team Support Personnel of the Year. They were very impressed with the work that we did. And then last but not least, I received an email today from Dr. Watson that KSD and the State Board are recognizing us again for a recognition of our social emotional growth and our graduation rate. We received bronze medals in both those categories because of the efforts that we're putting forth in both of those categories. So it's nice to have some star recognition from the state of Kansas. So I just got that this afternoon as well. So. All right. That concludes my report for this time.
We have lots of good stuff happening in our district. I was able to go, September 29th, I was able to go to the KASB Board Leadership Training that was here in our own building. And I got, I felt like it was very beneficial training. And one of the things that I'm, I'm, would like us to put together or to approve, or not necessarily approve, but I've got Clayton looking at Board of Education ethic code. And it's not, it's not legally binding, but it's just something that we can all agree how we're going to behave, how we're going to act. And I think it would be a good thing to have in place. It was something that KASB recommended. And a lot of, a lot of the boards that were represented had something like that in place. An interesting kind of side note, there was a, a board that was there that had had a fistfight among board members outside after the board meeting. So I was very thankful that that, that we don't have that. We all get along, we all work together and we all respect each other's opinions, even if we don't agree. And so I'm, I'm very appreciative of that. One thing that KASB handed out that I want all of you to have, this is just like a, they suggested that we leave it at our, at our spot on the, at the table. But it's, it's kind of front and back. Our district already does a really good job about the Kansas Open Meetings Act. All of our agendas list why we can go into executive session and, and kind of the guidelines and all of that on that. But on the other side, the one that doesn't have the, the colored stuff about a third of the way down, talks about the eight characteristics of an effective board. I kind of went through that. There's a few that we could work on, but most of them were, we do pretty good on that. And then the one on the right side talks about the roles and responsibilities of the board and of the superintendent. And that as a board, we don't want to cross into the superintendents. Sometimes we have to go over there to have a conversation, but we don't step into that to do that job. And then the superintendent also does not step in to do the job of the board. So they, they just suggested that we have that at our spot in, at the table so that we can kind of have a guideline, a quick guide to, to if we have questions on procedure or how we should approach things. So I just thought that was interesting. And we can make that available to the public. It's if, if anybody wants to see it, can, can contact Carrie's office and we can get that out to them if they're interested. So we have next up, Board of Ed, we can see the finish line, everybody. Board of Education Member District Responsibilities, Park and Rec, Ryan?
Um, I, I wasn't able to attend the last meeting, but we meet tomorrow. And I think there'll be some information on the master plan for Wright Park. So maybe I'll have some information about that next month.
Very good. Okay. Bright Beginnings and Head Start, Tammy?
Yeah, we had that meeting last Thursday and they're excited that the board approved for them to be able to hire an in-house sub because their guidelines are a little stricter in what they have to have as a sub. So they were really excited about that. And then the Bright Beginnings Parents Advocates, they participated in the Health Resource Information Fair and the Dodge City International Festival. And they felt like that was a really great way to reach a lot of families. And, and then the early head start, they took their families to the library and, which ended up being a really good thing because several of those families had never even been to the library. Didn't even know about the library, didn't have a children's area and stuff. So hopefully that'll produce some good opportunities for the families to be able to enjoy that. And then last week, they, you've heard about Bullying Week, but Bright Beginnings called it Kindness and Calm Week. And so they had some different activities they did. And then the teachers completed their first round of Fastbridge Testing and ASQ screening for behavioral and emotional. And then the cool thing that they're doing is because the district uses EduClima, EduClima to enter the academic data and things like that, Bright Beginnings is also doing that now. So when they transition to kindergarten, that's going to be able to travel in with them. So when they transition to kindergarten, that's gonna be able to travel in with them and things like that, which that's not been like that. So they're kind of excited about that and hoping to see some progress with that as they move into kindergarten. So there's a lot of things happening. I could probably talk another five or 10, but I won't because they're doing a lot of things.
That's awesome.
Thank you for that. Special Ed?
Things seem to be going well. There's the professional development, they have a volunteer professional development on, I think, Monday evenings that is well-attended by paras and that has been very exciting, you know, for the staff, that so many people will get online and do professional development. But the year seems to be going well and that's it.
Thank you. Anything to add on legislative?
Well, I think it's worth mentioning that last week, the legislative session had special committee meetings on public education and it's kind of interesting, they had all summer to do it, but they waited until school started and the schools in session before it brought everybody together. And then there weren't a whole lot of school people that were asked to attend, but some did attend anyway because it had to be an open meeting. And it sounds like there's gonna be a tough road ahead for a lot of things, really pushing the private schools and, and the, what am I trying to say? The voucher funding. The vouchers are still a big item, especially in northeast Kansas, I think. So maybe which is our area, too. So unfortunately, I hate to hear that because I just think that's taking public money and using it in private fashion and they don't have to follow all the rules that we have to follow and doesn't seem like a level playing field to me. But that is an opinion and glad to say that and be supportive of it. So we just need to keep watching that. We need to talk to our legislators. Some support that, just raw facts. And I, I think we need to realize how it does harm our public setting and we need to work together on that, so enough said.
Capitol Outlay?
We have a meeting on Wednesday.
Pretty good. I don't think, has a calendar? Very good. All right. We've got Tammy to look at bills for the November meeting. Announcements, October 23rd is our second Board of Education meeting for the month. It will be a luncheon meeting and we will be at Lynn Elementary at noon. November 13th is the Board of Education meeting here in the boardroom at 6 o'clock. And then November 13th through 17th is American Education Week. November 27th will be the second Board of Education Luncheon Meeting for November and we will be at Northwest again at noon. Are there any items for future board meetings or additional information? Or were you motioning?
I want to go to the next item, Matt. And I would like to request the two-two rule. Because two are absent, because we've met for over two hours, I would like to ask that we wait until the next regular evening board meeting for executive session. There's nothing that can't wait for another month. And I think we've put an exhaustive evening in and that nothing pressing that needs to happen next time.
Don't know that you're gonna get an argument. So what, what do we need to do to, to not do the executive session? Just?
Scratch it. We didn't know that two and a half hours ago.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We've got a motion by Tammy and a second by Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero. Thank you, everybody.
Two-two rule?
There's two gone.